All to order, the May 12th meeting of the Common Council. First up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we have the roll call. Ms. Schofield?
Alder Person Diaz?
Here.
Alder Person Doyle?
Here.
Alder Person Linder?
Here.
Alder Person McGilvery?
Here.
Alder Person Steiner?
Here.
Alder Person Touche?
Present.
And Alder Person Yers?
Here.
And Alder Person Ricky and Mayor Hokumar are absent and excused this evening.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is public comment. If there's anyone here tonight that wishes to speak, if you could please step up to the podium and write down your name and address. Thank you. And if you could please state your name and address just to identify yourself for the people at home.
My name is Jackie Wrestler and I live at 1018 Tamarack Way in Verona. I am a city of Verona resident. I am the parent of two sons, one of which is a current Verona High School student. And I'm a member of Sugar River United Methodist Church. I have been involved with this church since a committee was formed to determine the feasibility of a Methodist church in Verona back in 2003. We started with meetings in fellow committee members' homes. And soon we held our meetings in the former Verona Library, which ironically then became our current church home in 2006. Thank you for considering our request for a conditional use permit for our church at the current Wildcat Lanes property. I appreciate that you have the responsibility of considering what is in the best interest of the community in which I live. And I strongly believe that Sugar River is an asset and positive influence in our community with attributes that go beyond tax dollars. You received a handout in your materials that lists some of our community service projects and things we've done. And I also just wanted to point out that that is a large part of who we are. There's rarely a Sunday morning that goes by where our pastor, Gary Holmes, doesn't mention something about service and the requirement of service among our members. In fact, just yesterday, our congregation learned about our leadership's plan to reach 10,000 people by the year 2020. That is a big goal, but something I'm very confident we can do. This can mean sharing a meal with a neighbor, sending a card to someone in need, or doing some other service inside or outside our community. I have no doubt that this new vision will enhance life in Verona and beyond. And in current times, when social service safety nets are weakening, I feel that churches and other nonprofit entities will be vital to thriving communities such as ours. I also have just a few quick examples of community service from my own family. This past December, I'm a member of a small group and we made several bags of food and snack items to take to students at Country View Elementary School during the winter break, just so they would have some nutritious snacks and meals that they might not otherwise get. The four members of my family have also helped the elderly residents at Sugar Creek Apartments several times over the past few years by cleaning windows and scrubbing floors for them. We have also assisted a disabled Verona resident in his private home with yard work. My sons have had monthly opportunities through our church to provide community service, which is great, it's part of their high school curriculum, it's required. But it's also just becoming ingrained in their youth group. It has a monthly requirement of community service. So there are many opportunities. This has been very practically helping my son with his college applications to have all that community service, but it's also become a way of life for them. Our church's active high school youth group is a safe place for teens to be engaged and accepted for who they are and to carry out service each monthly. The impact this church has had on my family is truly immeasurable, and I don't use that word lightly. They say that it takes a village to raise children, and this church has been our village. I can also confidently say that this church is ingrained in the fiber of the Verona community through our commitment of service. And I hope you will agree with me that our community can only be stronger with organizations such as Sugar River UMC that give back to the community they serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Mike Polk. I live at 604 Acadia Way in Verona. And just to tack on to a few more comments, I certainly agree with everything Jackie has mentioned. I also am with Sugar River United Methodist Church in support of the offer to purchase and move into the Wildcat Lanes. One thing to tack on to what Jackie was saying is, you know, when we moved to Verona in 2001, one of the big reasons why we moved to Verona was the school district. You hear that all over the place, all over the time. And since then, there's been other wonderful quality-of-life types of things that have happened. Youth sports facilities are wonderful in Verona now. Many different reasons. But I think as we move forward, I think Sugar River, moving into a larger facility, can also expand the opportunities to provide service to this community as it grows. It would be nice down the line to hear people say that they moved to Verona because it's a city and a community that embrace organizations that reach out to the community, whether it's for the youth, the seniors, the sick, the ill, the lonely, whoever it is. As the city grows, and Jackie sort of mentioned that, the responsibility of the city will have additional, need additional resources to fulfill the opportunities that people in need are going to be available. And especially when you look at our school district, I mean, it's more than just the city of Verona, it's the surrounding area, and it's becoming more and more of a diverse population. And our organization as a church, as a city participant in the city of Verona is proud to be able to reach out and offer all the assistance. It is in our mission. Our intent is to grow our, as Jackie mentioned, our service opportunities for our members and actually embrace the community and to improve the, and continue to improve the living conditions of the city of Verona. The building itself, sure, it's going to look great. It's going to look a lot better than it does now. But that building's doors are going to be wide open for the community, not only to come in, be a part of our community, but it can be wide open for us to leave the doors of that church and go out and to serve the community. It's not there to have us close the doors, worship ourselves, sing hallelujah, and go home. I think Pastor Gary mentioned once that we're going to consider it as a mission outpost. It's not going to be just for its members. So I hope you greatly consider the opportunities that the city has to make in these decisions. And we're looking forward to actually working with you on improving that site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? All right. Onto agenda item number five, approval of the minutes from the April 28, 2014 Common Council meeting. What's your pleasure?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Alder Yers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Diaz. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Onto mayor's business, and being that the mayor is absent tonight, there is nothing to address. Agenda item number seven, the administrators' report. Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of updates this evening. First of all, we had reported at the previous council meeting that in the legal matter involving the IAF Firefighter Union and the city of Verona, that the judge had issued an oral order on April 24th. At this point, a written order has not been finalized yet. The city's legal counsel at Stafford have received a draft order from the plaintiff. They'll be reviewing that, and we expect to get a written order from the court possibly yet this week, which we'll send on to the full council. Last week, the city's ad hoc public safety committee met to review the fire and EMS station project, and as part of that update, reviewed an updated project construction cost estimate. The result of that estimate did come back that the costs were quite a bit higher in several areas than the earlier estimate from January. In particular, four areas, steel, drywall, concrete, and plumbing costs, all had come in higher than originally estimated. The construction manager indicated that that was likely due to a couple of factors. One, just being general construction cost increases. And second, the fact that at this point, we were just getting estimates rather than competitive bid amounts. The ad hoc committee did decide that they would like to have the design committee go back and review options in those four areas, but with the facility design as a whole, and put together a package of options to try to bring that cost back down to the original estimated amount. So the design committee will be meeting over the next couple of weeks. We had previously included on the schedule doing a full budget update for the council this evening. The ad hoc committee consensus was to delay that. So we're expecting to talk about this project at the next council meeting, which would be on May 27th. And at that time, also have some additional information and options for the council to consider on how to address the costs, where they're coming in at. On May 8th, there was a meeting of the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, and there was a hearing on the establishment of fees for urban service area amendments. A fee proposal was approved at that meeting, which includes a sliding scale fee for urban service area applications based on the acreage. And that fee would be collected with 50% paid upfront at the time of application and 50% at the time of development. Staff is going to be meeting with staff from CARPSY later this week, discussing how the fees would potentially impact future Verona applications, and also to talk about the process for future urban service area amendment requests that would come forward from the city. And again, we'll report back to that on the council at a future date. And then a couple of meetings that will be coming up. Next Monday, May 19th, we will be holding, hosting a joint economic development training session with the Verona Chamber of Commerce. That will take place at the Verona Senior Center at 5:30 PM. And then, as we had discussed during the very brief border review earlier this evening, we're tentatively looking at Monday, June 16th for a border review hearing meeting, and we'll finalize that date once the roll is complete. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Are there any questions at this time? Onto the engineers' report on the status of public works projects. Mr. Gunlock?
Thank you. Three items this evening. The first is Scenic Ridge Phase 6. The pre-construction conference for the streets and public utility construction will be held this Thursday here at City Hall. Site grading has already started out at Scenic Ridge. Utility work will start as soon as the street grading is completed and weather conditions permit. Project will be scheduled, or we'll also be discussing the contractor's schedule at the pre-con meeting. I would anticipate that the final phase of Scenic Ridge should be finished sometime around the end of August. The next project is Lincoln Street Reconstruction. Lincoln Street out here just south of City Hall will be completely reconstructed. We are holding a public information meeting Wednesday night from 5:30 to 7 o'clock PM at the Senior Center for interested persons and those that live along Lincoln Street. The contractor has indicated he will start construction on May 15th, weather permitting. That work will be installation of erosion control items and traffic control. Asphalt pavement removal and curb and gutter removal will start either late Friday or Monday morning of next week. As soon as the asphalt is removed and the curb and gutter is removed, they'll start the water main replacement. Contractor's schedule indicates that all work will be completed by August 29th. During construction, Lincoln Street will be closed to any through traffic, but will be open to local traffic. Residents' driveways will be maintained as best we can so that they can get access. And the final project this evening is Prairie Oaks Phase 3, the public works and street, public utilities and street construction. Pre-con was held for that project last week. Site grading again will start just as soon as weather permits. Completion date for that project is August 1st. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Gunlock, for the Lincoln Street project, can you just comment on access to City Hall and during hometown days?
City Hall will be open. The street will be closed. The barricades will be south of the South driveway here at City Hall. During hometown days, Lincoln Street south of there, there will be no pavement. We are going to maintain access to the small parking lot in the park south of City Hall here. It's going to be, there will be less parking there along Lincoln Street for hometown days, but the side streets will all be open. William Street will be open, Swatch Street will be open, Valley View will be open.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. If there are no further questions, we will move on to committee reports. First, we have the Plan Commission. Alder Linder?
Thank you. Alder Person Doyle, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-015, approving a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of a 60-foot-tall flagpole for Wisconsin Brewing Company to be located at 1079 American Way.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and I believe, do we need another motion, Mr. Burns, to talk about the two agenda items regarding Wisconsin Brewery at this time?
Yeah, I think there was a request from the applicant, since they have two items on the agenda, that they could be discussed, one following the other. So I don't know if we need a second motion right away at this time, but perhaps if the body does not object, once we complete item number one, or if there's any questions for the applicant, we could also discuss item number two under the Public Works Committee, which is related to the use agreement at the same time.
Are there any objections? And I believe Mr. Nolan is here, if he would like to, do we need background first, or can he come ahead? Okay. Do you have background or Jack?
I can do.
Thank you.
The proposed conditional use permit would allow the Wisconsin Brewing Company to install a 60-foot-tall flagpole on a property located at 1079 American Way. A conditional use permit is required for construction of any structure taller than 45 feet located in the suburban industrial zoning district. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on May 5, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Alder Linder. Are there any further comments, or if Mr. Nolan would like to speak at this time? Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion before us? Okay, see none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes? So then, seeing no objections, we would be on to agenda item number nine, C2, discussion and possible action regarding the Resolution R-14-020, approving a property use agreement with the Wisconsin Brewing Company for the portion of Outlet 1 of the plat of Verona Technology Park. Should we go to Mr., is it an other now?
Yes.
Yeah. Alder Touche for an update, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So am I making an actual motion here, or is it just a discussion? Motion, all right. I'd like to make a motion approving the property use agreement with the Wisconsin Brewing Company for a portion of Outlet 1 of the plat of Verona Technology Park.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alder Touche, seconded by Alder Diaz.
On March 10th of this year, the city approved a conditional use permit to allow the Wisconsin Brewing Company to expand their outdoor seating patio area located at 1079 American Way. One of the conditions of the approval was that the Wisconsin Brewing Company enter into a property use agreement with the city for allow for the use of an area along the shore of the city's detention pond adjacent to the property. Under the terms of the agreement, Wisconsin Brewing Company would construct and maintain improvements in this area in coordination with the city director of public works. Wisconsin Brewing Company would also indemnify the city for the use of this area, and they are required to maintain adequate insurance levels. City staff and city attorneys have reviewed the agreement and recommended approval. This motion passed unanimously in Public Works.
Thank you, Alder Touche. Are there any further questions or comments or discussion at this time? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes, and we'll pick up with Plan Commission at 9A2. Mr. Linder, thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-016, approving a conditional use permit for a proposed indoor commercial entertainment land use known as Orange Leaf Frozen Yogurt to be located at 611 Hometown Circle, Suite Number 2.
We have a motion and a second. Any?
The proposed conditional use permit would allow Orange Leaf Frozen Yogurt to locate at 611 Hometown Circle, Suite Number 2. The proposed restaurant would occupy approximately 2,100 square feet of space and would also use the westernmost outdoor patio for outdoor seating. Tentatively, Orange Leaf plans on opening in late May. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on May 5, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Are there any questions or further discussion? Alder McGilvery?
Thank you, Madam President. Let the record reflect, please, Ms. Schofield, that I'd be abstaining from voting on this item.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R-14-017, approving a conditional use permit amendment to the Epic Systems Corporation Group Development to allow for the construction of an underground parking structure located at 1979 Milky Way.
We have a motion by Alder Linder, seconded by Alder Yers.
The proposed conditional use permit amendment would allow Epic Systems Corporation to construct a 1,500-vehicle underground parking structure located east of their existing Campus 2. The proposed structure will accommodate parking for a future Campus 5, including three levels, and will contain 500,000 square feet of parking space. The proposed parking structure will be located entirely underground. Buildings for Campus 5 are not included in this middle and will be submitted in the future for review. Construction of the Campus 5 parking structure is planned to begin in late spring of 2014. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on May 5, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit amendment.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Alder Diaz?
Thank you. I'm abstaining from this vote.
So noted. Alder Touche?
How does this compare to the other underground parking structures in size?
They're almost identical. Same number of parking spaces. Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect that vote passed unanimously with Alder Diaz abstaining. Alder Linder?
Yes. Make a motion to approve ordinance, or ordinance 14-843, approving a zoning map amendment at 509 Bruce Street to rezone the property from the current urban commercial zoning district to the proposed urban industrial zoning district.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder McGilvery?
The proposed zoning map amendment would rezone the property of 509 Bruce Street from the current urban commercial zoning district to the proposed urban industrial zoning district. The proposed rezoning will help facilitate the use of the property for outdoor storage. The city's comprehensive plan identifies this area of the city as industrial. In addition, this parcel is almost 4,000 feet from the nearest commercially-zoned property. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on May 5, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Are there any questions or discussion at this time? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-018, approving a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor storage land use to be located at 509 Bruce Street.
Okay, we have a motion by Alder Linder, seconded by Alder Yers.
The proposed conditional use permit would allow an outdoor storage land use to be located at 509 Bruce Street. The applicant intends to park construction equipment in the rear of the property and store small equipment inside the existing building. This request requires the property to be rezoned from urban commercial to urban industrial, which we just did. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on May 5, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit, with the condition that the property needs to be rezoned to urban industrial prior to the permit becoming valid. I'd just like to add, this is, it used to be a car dealership, and the applicant wants to rezone it so they can store some construction equipment. It's either going to be in the building or it's going to be behind the fence, so you won't see any of it out front of the building.
We were going to get an overview real quick from Mr. Sayer. Okay. Adam, if you will.
Sure. So the applicant is, his business is based out of Fond du Lac, and they do a lot of work both in Fond du Lac and Iowa. So his intention is to use this spot more or less as a middle location. They do a lot of work at Epic. They do a lot of work with the underground utilities as well. So their intention is to store the construction equipment in the rear of the building as an interim two- or three-day solution while they're in between job sites. He's indicated that the only vehicles you'll see parked out front are employee vehicles if they're dropping off equipment, and, or if they're carpooling to a job site as well. The zoning ordinance does have a variety of specific conditions that they have to meet, no matter what. Those conditions include all outdoor storage areas shall be completely enclosed by a permitted combination of buildings, structures, walls, or fencing. In this case, the applicant is proposing fencing in the rear of the building. There's existing fencing on the property right now. He will be there tearing that out or fixing that so it actually doesn't have any more holes in it. Second thing is, the storage of items shall not be permitted in required frontage landscaping or buffer yard areas. Third, storage areas shall be separated from any vehicle parking or circulation areas by a minimum of 10 feet. And fourth, materials being stored shall not interfere in any manner with either on- or off-site traffic visibility, including potential traffic, traffic, and traffic pedestrian conflicts. And finally, the inoperable storage of vehicles is not permitted. The applicant is aware of all these conditions, and it feels he can meet these. One challenge I'll point out with this property is it is located within a floodplain. That's part of the reason why for the past, I think, three or four years, this building has been vacant. There was a fire in 2010. There was a lot of damage from that fire. And the fact that it is in the floodplain, you're limited to what kind of improvements you can put into the building prior to having to flood-proof that building. So staff feels this is a good use because of the floodplain challenges, and it makes more sense, obviously, as an industrial use as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Madam President. Adam, is, so I heard that they're storing vehicles outside. Are they using the inside of the building as well?
Yes, my understanding will be for smaller pieces of equipment, maybe some construction-type equipment, or just materials that they use on job sites. They haven't indicated exactly what it's going to be, but it's your basic storage of construction supplies, no gasoline, no explosives, nothing of that nature.
So, is it safe to assume they're not gonna use it as an office or something like that?
You know, I, I don't think at this time. He indicated it could happen at some point. Obviously, if they have a lot of work in this area, it could be used as an office, but as of right now, the request is only just, just for the, the storage of it. If they decide to use it as an office, they'll have to work with the building inspector, get the necessary permits, and, and bring whatever issues are inside that building up to code.
Okay, so the building's not occupiable yet? Is that correct?
I don't know the exa- I know it's challenging right now. I know there's some electrical issues in the building that maybe not have been fully resolved. If, if a business were to go in there from a storage standpoint, I know they can store things in there. But if people actually wanted to occupy space in there, that, that question, I'm not, I'm not sure if that'd be possible right now or not. But the applicant doesn't, at this time, does not intend to actually have people working in there, just basically dropping things off and leaving.
Alright. I'm just concerned that, I mean, it's next to, and I think it's still a wood, a mill shop. I don't, it may not be anymore, but just lots of flammable material around there, and knowing the fire history of the building, I'm just subtly concerned.
Thank you, Alder Touche.
Sorry. Thank you, Alder Touche. Alder Linder?
Just to, to Mr. Touche's question, it was, I believe it's gonna be, SPR Coaching is moving into the woodworking facility shortly, so it won't be woodworking for very long.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I can address that. My understanding is that SPR Coaching has not reached an agreed purchase price for that use yet, so that may not be happening. It depends if they're able to work out an agreement for the purchase of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any further questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Alder Linder?
The next item is, just for discussion, there is no action tonight. It's initial site plan and conditional use permit review to allow the Sugar River United Methodist Church to use the building located at four fifteen West Verona Avenue. Mr. Sayer, are you gonna do this one? Andy?
So, Sugar River Church is requesting a conditional use permit and site plan review to use the Wildcat Lanes property at four one five West Verona Avenue. The property is zoned urban commercial. However, it is within the downtown overlay district, and that district does require a conditional use permit for indoor institutional land uses. Churches are classified as, as indoor institutional land uses. On the screen right now, just to kinda show, I think we all know what the building looks like, but this is the existing building probably a few months ago with the snow out there, but that's what it looks like now. What the Sugar River is proposing to do is obviously occupy the building, but also make some improvements to the building as well. Some of the improvements they're proposing is to reduce some of the asphalt in the frontier and confirm, can turn, excuse me, turn this area into a green space with some landscaping and plantings, also adding a main entranceway as well. There'd be additional stonework out of the building, some trellises, some landscaping improvements around the, the outside of the building as well. Once again, just more pictures of, of what it's gonna look like, some of the improvements out there. So, there would be, would be improvements made to the building, and those improvements include a new and revised entry points and drive-up canopy, new glazing on the north facade, and possible sunshade structures, updated exterior finishes on exposed sides of the building, and screening of the mechanical units on the building itself. Access to the site will remain unchanged. That would not change from the existing access to the property. From a parking standpoint, a parking analysis was, was not completed by staff. Additional details are needed from the applicant, and those details include the maximum capacity of the actual building itself of, once the church is, once it's remodeled. One of the things that was talked about the Plan Commission was the downtown plan. We recently adopted the downtown plan a month or two ago, and this area was part of, of that downtown planning effort. And specifically, the plan recommends the removal of the existing Wildcat Building and replacing it with a two-and-a-half-story mixed-use commercial building containing twenty-one thousand eight hundred square feet of space. Specifically, the plan states, "The majority of the commercial properties will remain for the foreseeable future excluding two sites, four fifteen West Verona Avenue and four twenty West Verona Avenue. These properties are recommended as redevelopment sites due to their size, location, and ownership. The former bowling alley at four one five West Verona Avenue is a major entry point to the downtown. It is important to development near the interse- it is important to develop, develop, build near the intersection with a signature building at at least two stories in height." So, I think it's important that the, obviously, the applicant is proposing a, a variety of improvements here, but I would like just to point out that the plan did call this as a redevelopment site in the future. While the, the conditional use permit and site plan of the church won't prevent that from happening, it will make it more difficult in the future for that to occur with redevelopment. As Alder Person Linder pointed out tonight, this is an initial review. This was requested by, by the applicant. Normally, these only go to the Plan Commission, but this is an initial review that was the applicant, the church felt this is important to have this reviewed by the council tonight for feedback only. There is no motion tonight. This is just discussion only. The applicant doesn't intend to submit for the June Plan Commission and June Council meeting for review of this, but they're hoping to get some comments tonight, any type of feedback that you can offer them on, on their submittal. The architect is here. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions that you've had as well, and is also representative from the church, too.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer, and if any representatives from the church, I believe Brian Driscoll is here, if any of them would like to step forward and make some comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Brian Driscoll. I'm the building team leader from Sugar River United Methodist Church, and I, first, I'd like to start off by thanking Madam President and the common council tonight for this opportunity. I also wanna thank the Plan Commission and Alder Person Linder for his work on the Plan Commission in our previous meeting. Also wanna thank Mr. Burns, the city administrator who's been great to work with, as well as Mr. Sayer, the city planner, who's been great to work with as well. I'm gonna be talking with you about the community side of our church, and Doug Paul, Mr. Paul, our architect, will be able to answer any of your technical questions. So, as as Jackie and Jackie Rustler and Mike Polk stated during public comment, there are lots of different reasons why we support this, and before I even get into all this, I, I just wanna recognize a few people from our organization, and Gary Holmes is our pastor. And then, as you can see, it's a very full room, so we have lots of support from our membership. The other thing I wanna point out to all of you is that I had asked Mr. Sayer and Mr. Burns to include something in your package. And if you take a look inside your package, there's an item in there that has Sugar River United Methodist Church logo on the top, a new logo, actually. And this is something that I'd just like you to refer to. I'm not gonna read through it. I'm not going to do anything like that. But what I wanna do is point out a couple of items inside the, the document. First, there's a history. Second, there are community origins, so you can find out where everybody's from. Average attendance. Number of current members. And then, a list of community outreach services and missions, as well as other community missions outside of the Verona area. I guess there are three themes I wanna make sure to cover tonight, and first is the history. Sugar River United Methodist Church has had a history that began back in twenty, two thousand and three, but we've had a presence in Verona since two thousand and four, so just about ten years. And during that time, we've continued to have community engagement, and we've gone through at least two sites and are hoping for a third with your approval. And during this time, we've continued to provide many community services, and again, please take a look at the fourteen or so examples of those community service options. The future of Sugar River United Methodist Church is what I'd like to focus on as well, because we're really trying to look to twenty fourteen and beyond. And both Jackie Rustler and Mike Polk alluded to our twenty twenty vision of trying to reach ten thousand people. This is something where we're not trying to become a megachurch. This is something where we're trying to reach individuals throughout the community of Verona and beyond. We are currently an organization of about two hundred and twenty members, and if each one of us reached out to, you know, just a couple people, we'd have quite an impact on the community. The second item I wanna make sure to touch on after the history has to do with transformation. Sugar River United Methodist Church and many other religious organizations or groups are about transforming lives and transforming families. We wanna continue to do this through our mission and vision statement, which is connect, grow, and serve. Connect, grow, and serve to us means connecting with those around us in our community, growing with one another in our faith, and finally, serving the community. And I wanna emphasize the service part. Mike Polk addressed this in his public comment, but our doors will always be open, and it's because we're probably going out of them to serve the community. Second, besides transforming lives, we have an opportunity to transform a building. This existing building will become a cleaner, brighter, and more inviting space that is welcoming to visitors as well as residents that enter the city of Verona along West Verona Avenue. And as Mr. Sayer pointed out, this is an area that is a gateway into the community, and by taking a look at the slides that are provided to you for that project, I just ask that you look at the first pictures of what is currently there and the initial drawings and pictures of the initial proposal. I know that the second proposal that just went in a couple days ago looks even better than the ones that you're looking at right now. Finally, and very importantly, about transformation, with this existing building, we have an opportunity to be more environmentally friendly. We have an opportunity to use an existing space and have less of an impact on the surrounding environment. So, we're making a conscious choice to use an existing building instead of buying a building new. And I wanna touch on that as well, because there are several comments during Plan Commission, as I'm sure Alder Person Linder will remember. One of the commissioners made a, made a comment about, well, tell us about the history, or tell us about the choices that you've made to get to this point. And could you tell us about alternative locations that you've considered? And I'll start out by saying this. Our building team, when we started getting together over four years ago, we started out with about four locations. Two completely vacant land, new build opportunities, and two existing structures. When we did the comparison of vacant land, new building, the cost comparison was at least two and a half to three times more expensive. And we realized that that was cost prohibitive for us. So then, the other locations that we looked at included our current location, where we're currently renting or leasing from the city. We even talked with the mayor and city administrator about that opportunity. We tried to contact our neighbors around us, and our neighbors didn't call us back. So, we didn't have an opportunity to look at the properties around that, and so that was put off to the side. So, that gave us what we're talking with you today about, at four fifteen West Verona Avenue. And over the two and a half, three years that we've engaged with the real estate agent about this property, the, the price has been very different. And just to make everybody aware of this, Wildcat Lanes is one of many properties that is currently in receivership. It has been in receivership over three or four years, and Sugar River United Methodist Church is actually the first organization or potential owner, buyer, to get to the offer to purchase. So, there has been no other formal offer to purchase. Finally, I wanna again focus on the contributions to the community. As you can see from the fact sheet that I've provided you, there are more than fourteen local examples, and then there are also other examples in other states throughout the United States. And this is where I'd like to focus on our middle school and high school youth. And it's one of the main reasons why we're really interested in this facility, because we were, we will more than double our square footage and ability to provide space for our middle school and high school youth. And just as Jackie Rustler stated, and Mike Polk stated, we're trying to provide space for middle school and high school youth so that they have a safe place to be, but also so that they have a place to move out from and serve the community. We feel like that's part of who we are. Besides the examples here in the city of Verona, here in the state of Wisconsin, and the multiple states throughout the United States, we also have international examples of providing support to a group in Guatemala, where we provide community health and medical center support. I can't remember the number of years we've been doing this. I believe it's at least four or five, but we send a group down to Guatemala every year, and we also support it financially. Finally, the thing I wanna make sure to cover and make it clear is the contributions to the community and discussing this not necessarily in monetary values. And I tried to do a little bit of homework before I came here tonight, and I looked back at past assessments and appraisals. The current property in two thousand and eleven paid approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in property taxes. And in discussions with Mayor Hockamer, he advised us that approximately a third of that would go to the city of Verona. So, let's just call it eight thousand eighty-five hundred dollars. So, that was the, the tax bill for the city in two thousand and eleven. I didn't look at two thousand and twelve. I can't tell you why, but I didn't. In two thousand and thirteen, I was able to find another tax bill, and this one was approximately nineteen thousand dollars. And, you know, one of the first questions I got was, why is it less? Well, the property has lost value. So, it's now nineteen thousand dollars, and a third of that is approximately six thousand to sixty-five hundred dollars. So, the current taxable income to the city is sixty-five hundred to eighty-five hundred dollars. Now, I wanna make sure that we're clear in understanding what we have the opportunity to provide the community and continue to provide the community. It is the community service. It is the public outreach, and it is the things that make Verona a great community to live in. We wanna continue to add to that, and we're really looking forward to the opportunity for some constructive feedback from you. And I guess this decision is obviously in your hands, and I, I guess the, the last thing I would like to ask each and every one of you is, how can we get this project to a yes? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for your comments. Did you want to speak further, or hear if there's any questions first?
If there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Alder McGilvery?
Thank you. So, I'd like to say how much I appreciate how many of you are here tonight. For those of you who don't spend much time at council meetings, typically, this is a fairly small gathering of the people right here. So, it's always nice to have people who in our community who are invested in an issue, whatever it is, come and, and speak, or at least by presence, speak volumes. So, it's, it's great to have you all here. Thank you very much. I also wanted to say that I'd had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Day, oh, was it last week? Yeah. And, and I was, I was kinda surprised that I didn't hear more from other members of the church, but I thought I had a pretty good conversation with Mr. Day, and what I was focused on originally was tax value and loss of opportunity. And, you know, after my conversation, I, I took some time, and I really started thinking about the Sugar River Church, and I've been on the council for ten years, and I know what the church has done in the community, how it's grown. I know what a, a positive group it's been to work with for us as a city. You've habitated our, our old library, and you've given that library new life, and you've done a lot of other wonderful things out of that, that facility. So, I, I think what you've, what you've managed to say with your, your three speakers tonight really hits right on the head what you, you needed to say tonight to, for me to, to say yes to this idea. Because it isn't really, the more I thought about it, it wasn't really the valuation of the property or the potential for valuation. The potential that you, you're bringing forward tonight really is what this community is all about, and is what has made it a great place for me to live and grow my family, even though I'm not near church. A lot of the things you do, and a lot of the things that our sports organizations do, that's what makes Verona a great place. So, I wish you well in this endeavor. I know it's an expensive endeavor. I would encourage you to continue to work with the architect and the city to find ways to beautify that, that, that parcel. I, I really like the idea of putting some green up there in front. If you could find a way to do some more and still have enough parking for you to do what you wanna do, I, I think that's great. you want to do, I think that's great. The proximity to the school, as the Wildcat Lane, I've always thought was kind of squarely, frankly. So I like this idea of having a place for middle schoolers and high schoolers to go. I have middle schoolers and high schoolers, you know, some, a couple have participated in Young Life, which I think has been a good organization for them. They've learned a lot that way. And I know this city has lacked a place for youth to really kind of hang out, if that's what you want to call it. And I think because of the size of this place, it has great potential for that kind of mission if you guys choose to push that forward. So you have my support. Thank you very much for being patient, Mr. Day. The conversation we had was enough, and I'm glad that you all gave me the opportunity to come to it on my own without inundating me with phone calls.
Thank you. I will say the current Wildcat location does make for a convenient field trip spot, but this could be a little bit more wholesome of an outing for the children. Alder, yours?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off my comments, really, I want to echo what Mr. McGilvery was just talking about. Sugar River Methodist Church has been a great ally for the city, but not just for this city, but the community at large. That includes the ecumenical setting of Verona. The pastor, you've done a great job working with the other churches, with the crop walk, the Thanksgiving ecumenical services. I see a number of you who are in the band and the choirs as we all come together. It's a community there, and I really appreciate that. Like Mr. McGilvery, I also really appreciate the number of you that showed up tonight. And I also want to give a shout out to the kids that are here tonight. Sitting through a city council meeting and staying awake, I mean, that's pretty good, and they seem engaged. And a community is much more than its bottom line. And I think that's a lot what Mr. McGilvery was getting at with some of his remarks. And that's where Sugar River can help this community. Sure, we may lose that tax base, but what we gain is so much more valuable. So you have my wholehearted support, and I look forward to working with you in the future. And I congratulate you on growing so much at a time when the church seems to be dwindling in a lot of places. That's something to really be proud of.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Alder Touche?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm trying not to say any more than what's already been said, but I will admit, you know, I was on the council when we put in this commercial zone, and coming to this meeting, I was apprehensive on the idea, and you've done a great sales pitch. It, I echo what the council's already said, but it, nice job, you know? And the drawings have really helped change my mind on this.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Alder Linder?
I've got a question. Are you guys going to keep the bowling alley?
You wouldn't believe how many times members of the church have asked that question.
At least keep a couple of them, right?
We were thinking maybe one or two, but the architect might have an issue with that.
They're too slippery.
Alder, yours?
I do have a question, actually. It's for the architect. Do you foresee putting anything on the roof eventually, like a steeple or a cross, something like that? Or is the plan really just kind of keep at this, the flat roof as we see here in the drawings?
So far, we're thinking that what you're seeing here is more or less the form of what we're proposing. Talking with the building committee, they wanted to do something that wasn't too overstated. And they wanted to create an open, welcoming entrance, add some glazing, improve the overall quality of the building without, you know, doing this elaborate architectural statement. So, and you'll see, hopefully, in the coming weeks, the second submittal we submitted for the final review shows it in a little bit more detail, but in its final version. So that's what you're seeing there is more or less the expression that we're going to have for the building. And the roofs are going to remain flat.
Alder Touche?
Thank you. So now, we're talking a little logistics here. So I was thinking 10,000 families. Will this building handle 10,000 families?
I think that's the goal for outreach, not the membership. I think parking was brought up, and kind of the capacity for the sanctuary is envisioned at about 300 people. And per the standards, that's about 60 parking stalls. It's one for every five. So we're over that by about 90, so there's a little extra room. I think spatially, there's a lot of room in this building for people, so I don't see capacity as an issue. So we'll be adding more exits and improving egress and things like that. So, and adding a lift for accessibility as well, so.
Thank you.
Alder Linder?
You know, when this came to the Plan Commission, there were, you know, some of the commissioners were for it, some against it, some on the fence, and I was one of those on the fence. Spent a lot of time thinking about it. I talked to Mr. Driscoll today. And you know, obviously, the building visually is, you know, way better than what is out there now. You know, I agree that the green space is good, and the money, you know, Mr. Driscoll told me some investment you guys plan to make, so I mean, it's just substantial. It's coming in, you know, like I said, at the Plan Commission, I wasn't sure. I think I'm on board. I think you guys can, you know, bring a lot to the city. It's what's best long-term, you know, what's the big picture of Verona? Having a church there, yeah, we'll lose a little bit of tax base, but to have, you know, an anchor, so to speak, down there, I think that'll be great. So I support this as well.
Alder Diaz?
Thank you. I had a couple of comments and a question. I just want to say thank you for going over the property tax numbers, because that was pretty much my biggest concern coming into this, where, you know, how much are we actually going to lose? And it seems a lot more reasonable the way you broke it down, so that makes me feel better. I also think, I mean, everyone has different tastes, but I don't think that it looks very nice right now. And kind of being able to see the plans now, I mean, it's a way to make our downtown look nicer and to bring people into the community, which I think are all really positive things. So I'm definitely, yeah, you can call me supportive. I started out skeptical, but now supportive. Those are my comments. My question is, do you have an exact number on how much asphalt, either parking stalls or square footage, is going to be replaced by green space, at least in this plan?
It's about 3,000 square feet. It's not a huge amount, but it's, we're kind of trying to approach this from, do some now and hopefully in future, when there's more money maybe available, to do more parking lot improvements. You know, I think it's important to the church that they present a good image, too. So we're trying to do as much as we can right now. I think one of the things that's going to have a major impact are adding the foundation plantings, because right now, you can just see, the foundation comes right to the asphalt in most of the places, and it looks pretty abrupt. So I think that's one thing that's going to have a lot of benefit. And then hopefully, you know, we have extra space in the lot, so we should be able to someday maybe cut in some islands and do some more planting, you know? But we're trying to arrange our, you know, spread our money out, and it's thin, so.
Thank you for that. I think that would, I mean, because if it does become the gateway to the downtown, I think it's going to look a lot better with the greenery, so.
Any further discussion? Well, I was secretly hoping that everyone was here tonight to see me chair my first meeting, but appreciate you all being here just to say. And I would like to echo all the comments. It's great to see everyone here and participating, and I have had people reach out to me just saying how much that this church community means to them and how much they appreciate being a part of our city community. And I think that having a successful downtown truly is a balance of having opportunities like this to bring people into our downtown, to utilize the businesses and to help foster development. We need development in both senses, in having people here and participating in our community as well as economically, and really appreciate all of the feedback and discussion that we've had here tonight. With that being said, I think that wraps it up for Plan Commission tonight. Thank you, Alder Linder. Now, we will move on to Finance Committee. Alder McGilvery?
This is the exciting part, people. Under Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount
Okay, we have a motion by Alder McGilvery, seconded by Alder Linder.
On the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, first being to the Associated Bank of Green Bay for our 2002-2003 lease bond, revenue bonds. Those were CDA bonds. Second being to AECOM Technical Services for Engineering Services through May 12th, And lastly, being to the Metro Transit System Investment Partners share, $71,800. And as you all will recall, that is a pass-through we pay originally, and then Epic reimburses that. Again, that was $71,800.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee? See none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously?
Just, let me just say for the record, I think we should invite them every week. That's a happy crowd. Under Item 9B2, I'll make a motion to approve a service license agreement with Icon Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Civic Plus for the redesign and hosting of the city's website in the amount, first year, of $25,367.
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery, and that was seconded by Alder Touche. Thank you.
On the way of explanation, I will read from the administrator's memo. I would mention that we've had considerable amount of discussion of this at Finance Committee a number of times. The Finance Committee voted unanimously tonight to support this, and we hope you will follow suit. But to read from the memo, in 2014, the city budget did include $30,000 in the BTRB Cable Access Fund for our website redesign project. The city has reviewed proposals from the city's current provider, Gov Office, and another company, Civic Plus, that specializes in developing and hosting local government websites. In addition, staff has researched the use of open source technology for website development, including WordPress and Drupal. I would say that it became apparent that those open sources were probably not the appropriate venue for us to pursue, simply because of the size of the city at this point. I think the administrator put a fair amount of effort into talking to different municipalities, both large and small, and that seemed to be what came back every time he had that conversation. So based on the evaluation and options of discussions with other communities, the recommendation is to utilize Civic Plus for development, hosting, and support services. Civic Plus has a user-friendly content management system designed for non-technical staff and provides access to several modules designed specifically for local governments. The initial cost for the website redesign is $25,367, which includes project consulting, development training, and first year of support and hosting. And I will say, it would be entirely supported by the BTRB access funds. Those are franchise monies that are brought in to the city through our cable access. Beginning in the second year, the annual support and hosting fee is $4,134. This fee is subject to a potential 5% increase in the third year and beyond. Anytime during that time, we could decide after this $25,000 in investing and getting the site up and operational, we could withdraw from that and pursue other options if we so chose. Under terms of the service and license agreement with Civic Plus, the city would be eligible for a redesign of the city's website after three years at no additional cost. Additionally, the city would have the ability to obtain copies of all the website design materials and content at any time. So again, it would be the recommendation of Finance Committee that you would support this in moving forward.
Thank you, Alder McGilvery. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee? Alder Diaz?
Thank you. I am opposed to this proposal, not necessarily because of the service being selected, but I thought we should have had an open bid process, just for a contract of this size, barring an emergency or something like that. So I'm not necessarily saying that Civic Plus is a bad vendor or anything like that. I just think, with the kind of money being spent, and even if it's from franchise fees, I think it should have been an open process. And I do appreciate the work that staff put in doing all the research, and I know that that was all good work, but I just feel, as a matter of principle, that I have to vote against this.
Alder McGilvery?
Point taken. Mr. Diaz, I was wondering if maybe Mr. Burns could address that a little bit, because it was, we did have considerable amount of discussion at that finance level and go, I think, beyond the open source. We were, my understanding is that we were running into difficulty in finding other potential people that we might bid this out to per the size of the community that we live in.
Yeah, I can address that. And we did have a discussion at one of the Finance Committees about what process we should use. We initially had focused on two vendors that specialize in doing government, or doing websites for governments, Gov Office and Civic Plus, which have a different approach in how they take and a different pricing structure, but felt that those were good examples to look at. And if we look at a lot of websites developed in Wisconsin, they certainly have a large amount of coverage. We also talked about the open source option. I think part of the thought process of potentially not going with the full RFP route was that if we are truly looking at an open source or outside web development, there are a lot of different options, and it can become very difficult to really be comparing apples and apples, not just for the design, but for the ongoing hosting and maintenance. That said, there have been communities that have gone through an open bid process. I had the opportunity to speak to the IT director in the city of Sun Prairie. Their experience was they had developed a site internally using a Drupal-based open source platform. They had a staff person that was trained in that. That staff person left, actually was recruited by a web development company, leaving them with no staff that are able to maintain the site. So they are doing an RFP process right now, looking for somebody to be able to take on that site and be able to maintain that, kind of rework it, build out some of the things that were never finished. They are expecting to get a proposal from Civic Plus. They're also thinking that they will get proposals from somebody that could work with the Drupal language and maintain it. They've had some comments back from people saying that based on their size of community and budget, that they weren't going to be bidding on it. And Sun Prairie is a community with an in-house IT department and about three times our size. So, you know, certainly, going an open bid would be an option for us, and I wouldn't say that we wouldn't get proposals. But I think our size, our budget, and a desire to look for a company that is specifically experienced with local government were some of the factors that went into that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any further comments or questions? And I would just like to echo those sentiments, that it just seemed like Civic Plus was the best balance of giving more options to users, accessing the site, as well as making it easier for the staff to actually update and make sure that our site could be more current than the current Gov Office. With that being said, we have a motion and a second before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes on a, let's see here, what do we have left? Five to one vote? Six to one? Five to one? Yeah. Thank you for double checking, though. Any further business from the Finance Committee?
No, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto Public Works. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Madam President. Try to get this right. Item number nine, C1- Item number nine, C1. Like to, oh my goodness. I'll make a motion for approval for Resolution R-14-019, approving a development agreement for Prairie Oaks Second Edition Phase One and Two. For explanation's sake, the Prairie Oaks Second Edition Development includes the Murray Glen Apartments Project. The city has approved the development of three market rate apartment buildings with a total of seventy-six units that would be built as Phase One and Two of this project. Under the terms of the development agreement, the developer agrees to construct public improvements required for this phase, including Prairie Way Boulevard and the extension of Prairie Oaks Drive. Construction is scheduled to commence on or about May 13th of this year, with a substantial completion date on or about August 1st of 2014. The city will inspect all construction activities and build a developer on a time and materials basis. Prior to city acceptance of the improvements, the developer shall provide the city with lien waivers for the construction of the improvements, and all of the fees associated with this phase must be paid in full.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any comments or questions? Alder McGilvery?
Thank you. I would just like to say, I know there's been some interest in the senior component of this. We did have the developer at the Public Works meeting tonight, and he has indicated they are putting in all the roads that are shown in a packet tonight, which would allow for access into that senior site. It's listed as Phase Four, but in all likelihood, he is hopeful that that would be the next phase, which would be Phase Two, once that they get these market rates up and going. And they have indicated, I can't remember if you had said it, Evan, but they had indicated that they're looking to have these built out by August 1st. So there's some, I think, pretty good potential for the senior housing to happen in relatively short order compared to when we were talking about it, let's just say, six months ago, when they just weren't sure where it was going to go.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes.
Okay, so I'd like to, is it a motion? I guess a motion for, item nine, C3, a motion for professional services agreement for the Nine Mound Road County Highway PD Intersection Reconstruction.
Okay, we have a motion by Alder Touche. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder McGilvery.
Under this agreement, AECom would provide engineering services for the preparation of final plans, specifications, contract documents, and cost estimates for the reconstruction of Nine Mound Road from Cross Country Road to County Highway PD, including the reconstruction of the intersection at Nine Mound Road and County Highway PD. The cost for this agreement would be paid through the Tax Increment Financing District Number Seven. The estimated not-to-exceed fee is as followed. Roadway Design Services, eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Structural Design, fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Traffic Signal Design, seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Permits, seven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Project Meetings, four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. ROW Platt, twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Bidding, four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, totaling one hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Thank you, Alder Touche. Are there any questions or comments for the Public Works Committee? See none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Onto Agenda Item 10, New Business. First up, we have discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the operator license. Ms. Schofield?
We did not receive any operator licenses for approval this evening.
Thank you. Onto announcements. Alder Steiner?
Thank you, Madam President. The Verona Historical Society will conclude this year's session on the 21st of May with our last discussion of the country schools around the city of Verona and the surrounding area. It will be at the Senior Center at 3:00 PM, and all are invited to our grand finale for this conclusion.
Thank you for those announcements. Our last item would be a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion made by Alder yours, seconded by Alder Linder. All those in approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.